Hafadeh and good morning. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure is called to order in the time now 8:30 a.m. Today's date is Monday, July 7, 2025. Notice of this hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on June 27, 2025, with the second notice provided on July 5, 2025. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website and the government of Guam Public Notice Portal. This morning, the committee will hear testimony on the confirmation of Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission. We'll also be hearing Bill Number 29-38COR and Bill Number 132-38COR. I'd like to welcome my colleagues who are joining us here today. Senator Sabina Perez, thank you, Senator, for being here. Before we begin, I would like to go over the general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying first shall be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or individual is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from the hearing room any member of the Eleo Turan Guahan who fails to observe property quorum pursuant to the 38th Guam Legislature Standing Rules. Any violation of this rule of conduct will result in the removal. We will now proceed with the hearing and testimony of the reappointment of Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez to the Guam Land Use Commission. If there is anyone who would like to testify before I call the nominee up, to please make their way to the table. Otherwise, I'll go ahead and call Dr... Sir? Please state your name for the record, and you can proceed with your testimony. You can turn on your microphone first.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Speaker, Senator. My name is Brent Wisi. I'm with GHD Architects, formerly RIM Architects, former chairman of the Building Code Council for 10 years.
You can go ahead with your testimony. Yes, thank you.
I've known Madam President of the university for many years. I had a project that was going to go in front of GLUC. My mentor suggested I attend the meetings to get to know how the council works, know their process, and so I did. Unfortunately, COVID hit, and so then it became online. So I attended every meeting, watching them at work, and it was a joy watching her work. As former chairman of my own council, I know how hard it is to keep people on subject, keep people to the point, but not rush them, give them a chance to be heard, and yet make it a very effective and efficient meeting, and she did all that. She was fair, dispassionate, empathetic, and it was a joy watching her work. So I'm here in support, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to help.
Thank you for your testimony this morning. Senator Perez, do you have any questions? No? Thank you. Thank you, sir, for your testimony. We'll go ahead and call up the appointee, Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez, for her confirmation hearing. Thank you. Good morning, Madam President, and welcome. Please, you can go ahead and proceed with your testimony this morning for your confirmation hearing.
Okay. Madam Vice Speaker, Ada, and Madam Senator Perez, Sajous Masi for this opportunity to come before you. Before I begin with my written and oral testimony, I just wanted to preface it with Ayadeh. We've been trying to find other folks who would be interested in serving on the commission. It's tough to find folks out there, and then before we knew it, three sitting commissioners' terms were expiring and have expired. And so I come with hesitancy to come before you because it is an arduous task and a heavy responsibility, but one that I'm willing to continue if so granted. Dear Honorable Vice Speaker Ada and members of the committee, Buenos and Hafadeh, I'm humbled to serve in the capacity as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission. This position carries tremendous responsibility to ensure decisions on land use matters are made with diligence, sound judgment, and integrity. I have had the honor and privilege of serving as chair of the GLUC and the Guam Hybrid Land Use Commission over the past five years. I began my term at the onset of the COVID-19 global pandemic, chairing the GLUC's first virtual meeting via Zoom on November 12, 2020. The 15 GLUC and Guam Hybrid Land Use Commission meetings I chaired during fiscal year 2021 resulted in 27 approved applications. During fiscal year 2022, 16 meetings were held and resulted in 24 approved applications. In-person meetings resumed on October 13, 2022. During fiscal year 2023, 11 meetings were held with 22 applications approved. During fiscal year 2024, 16 meetings were held and 56 applications approved. And for fiscal year 2025, nine meetings have been held and 22 applications approved to date. The Guam Land Use Commission plays a pivotal role in shaping the island's development trajectory, and there are several strategic improvements it could make to better serve economic growth while maintaining cultural and environmental integrity. One, streamline permitting for priority sectors. Why it matters: lengthy and complex permitting processes can deter investment opportunities. Implement a fast-track review process for projects in key sectors like affordable housing, tourism, and renewable energy. Two, digitize application tracking and public hearing schedules for transparency and efficiency. The second, update the comprehensive land use plan. The current land use plan, Ita Nota, dates back to the 1990s, circa 1994. Opportunities to conduct a full update to reflect post-pandemic economic realities, climate resilience, and population shifts. Integrate mixed-use and transit-oriented development zones to support workforce housing and reduce congestion. Number three, expand mixed-use and workforce housing zones. Why it matters: zoning rigidity limits adaptive reuse and infill development. The opportunities: brought in the use of overlay districts to allow residential-commercial flexibility in urban centers. Incentivize adaptive reuse of underutilized hotel or commercial properties for workforce housing. Number four, align zoning with infrastructure capacity. Development often outpaces water, sewer, and road capacity. The opportunities: require infrastructure impact assessments as part of zoning approvals. Coordinate with Guam Water Works Authority and Department of Public Works to prioritize zoning in serviceable areas. Number five, foster public-private collaboration. Developers and community stakeholders often work in silos. The opportunities: establish a land use advisory council with private sector, village mayors, and planners. Host quarterly forums to align zoning policy with economic development goals. These are just a few areas for further consideration and possible consideration. Streamlining processes related to the Advisory Review Committee may be considered by this committee, including the number of public hearings scheduled, and to set a maximum time for position statements by agencies to be considered and submitted. Another area for consideration would be to codify cultural assets that need to be preserved to avoid arbitrary decisions. The GLUC currently has three expired commissioners and two new members. Without the confirmation of the expired three, the GLUC will cease to have a quorum to address new applications. Sajous Masi for your favorable consideration, Master Quetdu Anita Borja Enriquez.
Thank you, Dr. Enriquez. I'd like to welcome my colleagues, Senator Chris Barnett and Senator Teletide. We thank you for joining us here this morning. I appreciate your attendance. I'll go ahead and open up the discussions to my colleagues. We'll start off with Senator Perez. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Vice Speaker, and good morning, Dr. President Enriquez. And I do appreciate you agreeing to accept this nomination considering at the time when you were serving, I believe you were not president of the University of Guam, and now you are. And that was my big question is whether, considering that is a more than full-time job, whether you're able to also serve on this commission, which is also very busy. And listening to the testimony by Brent Wisi, I do appreciate the ability to manage meetings, and that's a big thing, especially these meetings, especially when it comes to land, tend to be long meetings and very controversial, too, as a matter of fact. I do appreciate your testimony, and I think you're going to keep many of our offices busy in regards to any type of legislation that can help to address some of these matters. But I believe a lot of this is an executive branch-related, so the land use plans, we all know that that is way overdue as far as updating. And the charge of that, I believe, is under BSP, who's also very much understaffed as well. And that's something that just needs to get done. The Application Review Committee, too, is something I understand, too, that sometimes the position papers are not even submitted, and these developments continue. And so there has to be overall coordination within the government to ensure that we are balancing development with environmental protections.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I do appreciate your testimony. And when you say codify cultural assets, can you explain that?
Well, when I use the term codify, it really means to put it into statute and to make it part of public law. And so we basically defer to our members of our Guam Legislature to be able to review any kind of proposed resolutions or amendments that certainly take into consideration the current state of the island and certainly to ensure that we have identified what are these cultural assets. In having conversations with Mr. Jo Kinnata of the Guam Preservation Trust, the question becomes, well, why is it that we haven't addressed it in this matter? It's as well because it's not in public law. And so what I envision, hopefully, is one day, maybe a capstone project, but a mapping of our cultural assets, taking into consideration what's already in the cultural inventory, and see perhaps the gaps. The cultural asset could be a view. The cultural asset could be a piece of property relating to something historic, something that goes back to, that relates to our history, our culture. But that requires stakeholder dialogue and something that I know that the commission does not make on its own with regard to unilateral decisions regarding something that should invite as much input as possible.
I appreciate that, and I believe Guam's stark preservation also has that responsibility within their statute, enabling statute, that they're supposed to develop a comprehensive plan as far as cultural assets go. Yeah, and I think we've learned from many of the, I guess, the military discussions that it's not just about the archaeological findings, but also the landscape, the natural landscape that surrounds it, holds a lot of clues as to how our ancestors survived and created this culture here in Guam. So I do appreciate these responses, and I look forward to hopefully bringing these into fruition, and I do appreciate you accepting the nomination amidst your busy, busy schedule. So Sajous Masi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Barnett, you're recognized, sir.
Madana Sajous, Sajous Masi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this beautiful Monday morning, and Sajous Masi, Madam President, for your willingness to serve again. You know, as I was walking in the public hearing room, you're on the big TV out in the lobby, and I kind of scratched my head, and I was like, huh, President Enriquez is being nominated to serve on the GLUC? But you began serving prior to your term as the OJ president?
Yeah.
Okay, so to kind of just follow up on Senator Perez's line of thought, do you believe that there are any potential conflicts with you maintaining dual roles as the president of OJ and also serving on the Guam Land Use Commission?
Thank you for that question. I think it relates to conflict of time commitment, right? And I always say that we're only as strong as our weakest link, and I believe that the staff that we have within the planning division of the Department of Land Management is amazing. I've asked them at times, do you need more help? Do you want interns? Do you need more money? But they seem to be able to manage it, I think, in terms of just ensuring that they do have enough capacity, because there are a lot of applications that do come through, but they're very diligent. If the application is not ready to be included on the agenda for the Guam Land Use Commission, it doesn't get there, and there have been times when we have not had a meeting because there isn't anything on the agenda. So there doesn't appear to be a rushing or fatigue from their part. Our role as commissioners is to ensure that we do our due diligence to pour through voluminous documents that are included as part of the package, the application package, including the minutes from the municipal planning council, meetings, and also the feedback that comes from the stakeholders from those respective municipalities and so forth. But I also serve on the WAAS Senior College and University Commission. I think the work in that is much heavier. I say that because it's usually... The responsibility is always reading multiple thousands and thousands of documents, but in managing my time, I'm able to balance. When I feel that I can no longer serve in terms of providing the quality time that is needed within either one of those two commissions, I'm prepared to step down.
So you think the conflict would come mostly on a time management, as if you needed any more reading material, right?
Yeah.
But if you start making a bunch of decisions that really favor OJ, we might come for you, check on you.
Thank you. I think we've only had maybe one or two applications that have come through. In each regard, I've had to recuse myself, so understanding the need to exercise integrity with regard to that process.
You know, I really like what you submitted for testimony in that you laid out via bullet points just a lot of the priorities you have relative to your service. I appreciate, number four, align zoning with infrastructure capacity. Why it matters: development often outpaces water, sewer, and road capacity. I mean, sometimes we're outpacing these developments, or outpacing the infrastructure by 10, 20 years, right? So I appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we give an example of someone who owns property and was able to engage in a particular business that was not conducive to a housing subdivision. And so the business lay dormant for about five years, but the housing subdivision exists with children and parks, and that business that has resurrected with their license with no regard for, oh, my gosh, now we have kids. So there's a potential nuisance liability associated with that. So the recommendation is just for consideration, further dialogue obviously needs a lot more stakeholder conversations around those. Long overdue. We see tons of variance and conditional uses and zone changes and so forth, and for me, why don't we just be efficient and just update what we have so that when applications do come through, it streamlines, it makes the processes more efficient, and perhaps maybe some of those don't even have to come to the commission.
Could you describe maybe generally, and I hope it's not too long-winded of an answer, what's your stance relative to land use? Would you consider yourself very pro-development, moderate, cognizant of the challenges that we face due to our environment?
It's a balance, and we see a lot of families relocating stateside because they just can't afford to live on Guam. And so what's interesting is back in 1994, in the Ita Nota Plan, one of the sections referenced the lack of affordable housing, and that was 31 years ago, and we're still saying that. We're still singing the same old tune. And so it's going to require us taking a look at everything that we have and once and for all doing something that's going to address our communities from that standpoint, but also take into consideration what we need to have a balanced land use plan, take into consideration what works for our people, and certainly what is going to keep our people from leaving.
What do you think the government's role is in providing the long-awaited solution to affordable housing?
I'm sorry?
What do you think the government's role is in solving the affordable housing crisis?
I think they had a whole forum on that. Asset mapping is going to be important, bringing the stakeholders in, taking a look at what we have in terms of our entire island's mapping of available properties and see what kinds of funding is available, not just locally, but also federal, that will help to support building affordable homes. Taking a look at what new technology is out there, what's more affordable in terms of homes that are going to sustain super typhoon winds, and ensuring that we do have infrastructure laid out on whatever areas in the island are earmarked for building affordable homes. Currently, the individual or the individual or the families are burdened with the infrastructure development if they do have land. So they do have their own land, but they don't have the funding to build whatever water, sewer, et cetera, is required power to proceed with building their home, then that land continues to lay dormant.
Sajous Masi, thank you for your responses, and I'm eager, I know Senator Teletide, we have some questions, that she's kind of been on this train of thought about streamlining processes and stuff like that. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions, and good luck, Madam, on your nomination.
Sajous Masi.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Senator Teletide, you're recognized, ma'am.
Sajous Masi, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues. I apologize, Mr. Chair, for being a little late, but I was listening as I was driving down here to your opening remarks, Anita, Dr. Enriquez. So first, again, thank you for wanting to accept this position. And what did you say was it's an arduous, is that the word you use, task, is what you said?
Yes, thank you, Senator. I say that because not a lot of people want to do it.
No, they don't. How many times do they meet a year? I mean, meet a month?
By law, we meet twice. We schedule twice a month. If there are no items on the agenda, the meeting is canceled.
Okay. And the last meeting, I believe, was in January of the Guam Land... At least, that's what's on the website as far as your board minutes meeting, and I'm a stickler when it comes to the websites to inform the public, transparency is key.
Right, right, absolutely.
So the last time I'm showing here was in January.
Yes. I did pose the question to the department, and I said, how come our website's not current?
Okay.
And so I asked, well, who is our webmaster, and whose responsibility is it to make it current? But thank you for recognizing that, Senator Teletide, it is something that they're going to be working on. And I did ask if they need some help. Do they need interns? What do you need in order to ensure that...
Would they have to pay for those interns? That's probably the reason why they're not accepting it.
No, we never did have that conversation about, well, what is it going to cost? And interns are, unlike part-time employees, interns are doing it for credit or perhaps a very, very modest stipend and the credit, or no credit, but a very, very modest stipend, which could range $500 for the entire semester or $750 for the entire semester.
Well, I hope that goes through for you. Now, again, when was the last time the Guam Land Use Commission had a meeting? Because the last one I saw was January. Is that it?
No, we've had meetings subsequent to that afterwards, so yes.
You know, in the 35th Guam Legislature, I created a legislation, and it passed by this body, actually unanimously, I think it was unanimously, and no committee thinks it wasn't, but it did pass the body on penalizing agencies who sit on the ARC and provide the information that's needed to guide the Guam Land Use Commission in decision-making. The biggest issue that we were told was that for the Guam Land Use Commission was the fact that you can't get this information, that they're holding back some critical reports that are needed, and that sometimes is the delay of the Guam Land Commission. Is that still true to form?
I don't know specific examples, but if an agency that's part of the ARC does not have that particular expert because they're on extended sick leave or some other purpose, then there's a little bit of a delay. But I don't recall how long. We do know that if the expertise isn't available, then the position statement doesn't go through. For the most part, the primary agencies have been very good about submitting their position statement to the Department of Land Management as part of the ARC.
What one agency do you come across most of the time when it comes to not providing the report that's needed?
That would be...
In the ARC?
Yeah, I would defer that question to our chief planner because her department deals directly with these members of the ARC. We don't hear the nuances with regard to any delays with specific agencies. We just know that, well, if an application hasn't made the agenda for the commission's review, then it's still pending all of the position statements.
Well, I highly recommend you take a proactive approach and find out this information, not just sitting on a desk, wait for something that comes in front of you. I think we're having a lot of situations where we're getting constituents coming to us, saying that the Guam Land Use Commission has not heard our document, and they're blaming somebody else that they haven't got the information. So I think that it might behoove you to at least find out who is trying to get on the Guam Land Use Commission and find out what the delay is, what's wrong, why can't they get on. Do you ever have constituents come up to you and ask you, hey, I've been trying to get on the Land Use Commission, but my application is in front of you? Has that ever happened?
Not necessarily regarding an application, but rather it could be a concern from the real estate association on maybe a letter that was sent, they wanted a response, but not necessarily an application.
Okay, I'd like to hear more, actually, in that area, because I'm thinking about reintroducing that ARC bill that I introduced that would penalize directors for not providing that information upfront. You know, I reached out to you not too long ago, since we're still on meetings. How many meetings have you missed in the last two years, just the last two years from these meetings?
It's rarer that I miss a meeting, and if I do, even when I'm off-island, I'm able to participate. If I do, it's only because I'm mid-flight. If I do, it's only because I'm mid-flight between Guam and Honolulu. But for the most part, if there is a vice chair available, the meeting still continues. I may have missed, I forgot to ask that information, I may have missed maybe two or three.
In the last two years?
I'll have to verify with the chief planner on that. Yeah, I don't recall the exact number, but I've been able to make meetings when I'm here. It's rarer that I do not attend.
Do they have Zoom opportunities for you to attend via Zoom or all in person?
These are all in person.
I see.
Yes, but we were in Zoom from 2020, late 2020 through.
Is there any reason why the Guam Land Use Commission does not be able to go through Zoom process, or is it difficult?
No, we could do it. The meetings are livestream as well through YouTube.
Right.
Department of Land Management's YouTube channel. And for the most part, we want to afford the opportunity for constituents to be able to attend in person, but I can bring that up. The only reason we would have a Zoom meeting, at least from my recollection, was because there wasn't a vice chair available, and we wanted to keep, I don't like canceling meetings if I can help it. So I think I recall maybe being, I forget which, Boston and chairing a meeting from there.
Okay. Well, I'd like to hear how many times you've missed in the last two years, if you can calculate that, and just send it to me via WhatsApp if you'd like, you know, we have direct connection, you and I. I also reached out to you regarding a particular legislation. So my first question would be, do you think that land zone, changing zoning should be done through the Land Use Commission, or should it come to this body to decide?
Well, the zones, zoning is codified with regard to zoning decisions, what is already in public law that is in place until that is amended. That is what the Department of Land Management and the GLUC will follow.
So do you think it should be gone, it should go through the Guam Land Use Commission and not this body? I mean, it gets political when it comes to this body, but with the Guam Land Use Commission, you have all that information and data, and it's a process that this body actually put in place for it to happen. So it's a simple question.
I stand corrected, yes, it should come to the commission.
Okay, it should. It should come to the commission. Because we have one piece of legislation I brought to your attention, just to find out if this individual had gone to the Guam Land Use Commission for his zoning change from R2 to M1. And you said it never got there. And then I reached out to the constituent, and they said, yes, it was in the Guam Land Use Commission. So you asked me to see a Celine Cruz. So, you know, I'm asking if you can contact her, because she hasn't responded to my request, trying to find out if this individual did at least go through the process to find out if there was a reason why they couldn't get this through. You know, it's ironic, because with all, there was a public law 33-219, which created the Guam Hybrid Land Use Commission. Do you also over, you know, you sit on that hybrid commission?
I do, Madam Senator. I chair that commission, included with the regular members of the GLUC are members of the Guam Mayor's Council. You have at least the mayor who oversees the village in which the application is based on, and two other mayors.
So what's the main difference between the Guam Hybrid Land Use Commission and the Guam Land Use Commission?
Well, for projects that are $3 million and above, they must go through the hybrid. The Guam Hybrid Land Use Commission, yeah.
Okay, so it's a money amount scenario? So the hybrid, it's for a lower amount or a higher? I mean, you said.
It's a higher amount, yes.
It's a higher amount? So anything over $3 million goes through the hybrid?
Yes.
Well, that's kind of odd, because you would think it would go through more scrutiny if the more expensive it is and the more impact it would have on our lands, that it would go through the, you know, process of the Guam Land Use Commission. But, okay, so that's how it rolls? Okay, I'll take that. Thank you so much for being a stickler on websites. Please, I'm holding you to it, because it is not up to date. And as a chairman, you know, I hope that, I always tell all board members, you know, to please keep that up to date, your website. Transparency and accountability all stems from that. You know, even ethics, you know, if you want to be morally and ethically correct, then be transparent and make sure that all the information is on your website. So other than, you know, keeping that up to date, finding out from Celine, if you can, Cruz, Ms. Cruz, and then finding out what agencies are holding back on information that's needed to pass through the ARC to get to the Guam Land Commission. So, and of course, how many times you've missed in the last two years. Greatly appreciated. And also, I hope that your time being served will also be extended to the next generation, and try and see if you can recruit individuals who want to sit on this commission, because it is very, like you said, arduous, but it's also giving back to the community. And I hope you can find that next generation willing to serve, and you provide them with your institutional knowledge of being on this board for five years, that you can pass that on to the next generation. So thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Taidewee. I'd like to welcome my colleagues, Senator Trelaghe and Senator Gumatata. Ma'am, Senator Trelaghe, have any questions?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Anita, Madam President, for your willingness to serve again on this committee and commission, and for all the work that you've done over all these years, especially during COVID. I remember that time, and there was still great demand for your work at that time, despite all the other challenges that we were having. So I'm very grateful that you were able to find a way to get those things done. And I heard you say this morning that you, no backlog normally, right? That you guys are able to clear your agendas, you're able to move on whatever is ready for you to move on.
Absolutely.
And that's a big change over the last 10 years, I would say, so I'm very grateful for that. And so there are, but there still are delays in other areas, and you've acknowledged that and kind of given us some advice. Can I just talk about, you talked about, one of your recommendations was about a commercial zone to allow multi-use. I think you intended residential as well in commercial zone? Is that prohibited right now or allowed?
Well, the variances are submitted to the GLUC for areas in which there's already a designated zone, and a variance application will come through from time to time. And so that's already a process that exists, Madam Senator?
Okay, so I'm just curious about this, allowing multi-use when really commercial zones allow multi-use, right? They do allow for residential or commercial at the same time?
Yeah. Yes, I mean, we've seen those come through.
Okay. Because, yeah, one-family dwellings is allowed, and then multifamily dwellings is a conditional use, as you said. So the, the public hearings, so some of the realtors believe it's the public hearing process that's causing the big delay in them being able to use the land. But I've been kind of following this process, and so the hybrid, I mean, requires additional hearings out in the villages, right? But I've seen them be very efficient sometimes, and I guess, like, for example, recently, they had the hospital, Mangila rezoning for the hospital properties. And I have to go look back, but in my memory, the two hearings that the village held were almost right after the other. One was together with the municipal planning council meeting, and they didn't seem to have any problem moving that along. Do you think there's a problem with the villages having these hearings?
No, the only glitz would be concerning the meeting, the open government law, and putting the announcements out, Madam Senator. And, you know, I think there was maybe one example where that happened, and because that, you know, the ads weren't put out. The notices weren't provided according to, you know, the, yeah.
That we do hear from the mayors. So they say they have to publish this, they have to pay.
Yeah.
But I have seen where some of the developers are the ones paying for the ads.
Yes, yes.
All right, so do you continue the commission, does it continue to publish in the newspaper? Because we've changed a public notice, and I just want to know, where would people find your ads?
I will have to ask the department, but I want to thank the senators for passing that bill to allow for digital ads, because I did get a reminder about that from a local media print establishment, that that opportunity is available. But I need to, let me verify with our planning department on that.
All right. Because for me, those land applications are very important. Sometimes it's the notice that the community needs, right? And so I would just ask you to be conscious of where those are being advertised, because I know we have now allowed kind of advertisement on websites. But if we were trying to get to the public, I'm just going to ask you personally to please publish where, even if it might be more expensive, whatever will get to the public the best, the neighbors, the same community.
Absolutely.
Sisus Massey. And then about the, are decisions being made by the commission if, for example, one of the ARC committee members did not submit something?
For the most part, all the required, I have inquired about maybe, well, we didn't get something from, I think, GDE. Well, it's not germane to the application itself. So even though you have some agencies listed, if it's not germane to the application scope, then there is no response from that respective entity. For the most part, I mean, the usual Bureau of Statistics and Plastics, GPA, Guam Environmental Protection Agency, the Guam Department of Agriculture, the Guam Water Works Authority, the Department of Public Works, I mean, the usual agencies that have, you know, have some kind of vested interest in ensuring, you know, Department of Parks and Recreation at times, you know, you'll get a position statement, but not necessarily all the time.
All right, but do you continue to make decisions, for example, if the Historic Preservation Office did not submit its review?
If, my understanding is that if multiple attempts have been made to try to get that position statement, and yet one does not come in, and it's been on hold for, you know, I don't know what is considered a significant amount of time for the planning department, but I, yeah, we will proceed with what's submitted on the agenda.
All right. Has it ever been where the agencies ask for more time?
I will have to refer that to the.
The planner?
The director.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then about the cultural assets, while there is not that broad plan as you described, they do, they are supposed to be updating their plan that is part of their mandate there, and listing them actually in priority, right? Which is most important to take care of, because it's at greatest risk, or there's none of these left, things like that. But in the interim, is your commission able to be informed by the SHPO or the State Historic Preservation Office or the Guam Preservation Trust? Or are you saying that you're not able to listen to them unless it's in statute?
I mean, they have an opportunity to participate. Madam Senator, we also have a section within the Guam Land Use Commission meeting agenda for public comment, and that's also another opportunity for any stakeholder to be able to submit something.
So when you're making a decision, what would it be, how would you do that if you're saying it's not mandated by statute that we protect these areas, but the SHPO is recommending that you do? How do you feel the commission's able to act? Are they able to say, okay, we're going to protect that? Or are you saying they can't protect that because it's not yet in statute to protect that asset?
Well, the, I'm trying to recall an instance where we've received a position statement from SHPO, and I'll have to go back to my notes, but I don't recall.
Okay, like, what about Two Levers Point? Remember? I think there was an argument at that development over there, that it was, you know, a cultural landscape or something like that, I think I remember, from the Historic Preservation Trust, talking about that.
That went through the Hybrid Land Use Commission, where we had representatives from the Guam Mayor's Council, including the, yeah, I recall.
All right. And are we able to recognize that as a cultural asset at that time?
At that time, you know, I did have inquiries, because anytime an application comes through, I go back and review, and I discuss with the chief planner, and I ask questions, and I ask why. And so usually, it's because it's not in public law.
Okay. So would you say you, they make their recommendations, and that weighs heavy on them, whether it's in public law or not?
Are we speaking about the planning staff? Are we speaking about the commission or the applicant?
Sorry, you said that, for example, in that Two Levers Point, the staff makes its recommendations, and when you asked them about it, they said because it's not in public law, that they couldn't say more about?
Right, right. And so the recommendation that I made in my testimony with regard to cultural assets, because I have had conversations with, you know, representatives, a representative from a specific agency, and so I asked why or why not? And so we did have the conversation about a need to have cultural assets defined, and so that there is something explicit that we can refer to, so that it's not left up to the arbitrary, you know, opining or decision-making by a specific group. So in that particular case, I felt it was important for us to move forward with some kind of identification, making explicit what are cultural assets? And if that indeed is defined as a cultural asset, so let's protect it.
All right, and so that's my question. So without it being in statute, you're not able to listen to the State Historic Preservation Office or the Guam Preservation Trust in determining whether something is an historic asset or not?
We, I believe that that dialogue, Madam Senator, belongs in some kind of working group where it's clearly defined. We're going to follow what's in the law, you know, we're going to follow what's within our mandate as a commission. But with regard to defining what is a cultural asset, I believe that there are many parts of our island that need to be codified and recognized explicitly at what is that cultural asset? And so the question I pose is, can the view be a cultural asset? And my, you know, my answer will be yes. You know, if we all agree that that is a cultural asset, then yes, indeed, and let's protect it.
All right. All right, thank you very much, and thank you again, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate you. Senator Gumatata, you're recognized, sir, for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no questions for President Enriquez. Again, you're a busy person and stepping forward to serve. I think we should look at your whole list of things you're doing today. I don't know when you have time to sleep, but I thank you again for stepping forward again to serve. Thank you, ma'am.
Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Gumatata. Madam President, perhaps just a couple of questions that I may have. I know we did have the public hearing for, I think, a couple of the commission members for GLUC, Ms. Flores, and I think Mr. Pangolin as well.
Yes.
So hopefully, we'll be able to get them onto the session agenda for July. And with their appointments, and then if we're able to get your confirmation onto the July session, would that make the quorum once again for the GLUC? would that make the quorum once again for the GLUC?
Absolutely, thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Speaker. Uh, we, uh, we need to, we need to elect a vice chairperson within the commission. But because, uh, I think the 90 days beyond our expiration date has already come to fruition, we're not able to do that. And, uh, by, 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 by policy, if the chairperson is unable to chair the meeting, then the vice chair kicks in, but absent a vice chair, we can't hold the meeting.
Okay, yeah, and you know, uh, I was looking at your application date and it was, uh, submitted since April of 2025, but the legislature did not receive it until June 3rd, 2025. And, uh, you know, it just goes to show that, you know, we do try to make every effort to have public hearings for confirmations to the nominees, so that we don't find these commissions and boards, uh, lacking, so that they lack quorum and the, the work of the people is not able to get done. Uh, other than that, uh, the other question I had is when applications come in, are they first in, first out? How are they processed, uh, through the GLUC?
Uh, well, we, we act on what's presented to, in the agenda, uh, for our meetings. As far as the planning, uh, department or division goes, uh, they, they, you know, once everything's in, everything that's required comes in, then, uh, and then they finalize it, then it gets on the agenda. So it's, uh, it, it just depends on, on having everything together in the package that's considered complete to get on the agenda.
Completed applications are processed first in, first out?
Yes, abso- yeah.
And then have their hearings forward. Oh, okay, I just wanted to, uh, ask on that because I didn't, I didn't understand that process there. But other than that, um, we'd like to thank you for, again, uh, stepping up to the plate for, uh, this, uh, commission. And, uh, thank you for giving of your time. I know it's, uh, your time is very split between, between what you do, uh, as the president of UOG and, uh, the commission, but thank you for making the time for it. And, uh, like, uh, my colleague had mentioned, you know, we hope to entice more, uh, you know, individuals to, to come forward and, you know, get these new generations to come out and be a part of the process and seeing how is it that we can ensure that, you know, continuity of, uh, of, uh, our boards and commissions continue to move forward with, uh, bringing more people on board and then how is it that, uh, you know, the future can look? But, uh, other than that, I don't have any other questions. Like to thank you again.
Sure.
Thank the governor and the lieutenant governor for moving your nomination forward. And we'll, like I said, we'll move it forward and see if we can get it onto the, uh, July session. And that way you'll be able to have quorum for your, your next meeting and, uh, we look forward to it. So thank you, Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez. And this concludes the confirmation hearing for Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez to the Guam Land Use Commission. Thank you, ma'am.
Sijus Massey, Sijus Massey, members.
Uh, thank you. And now we'll proceed on to hearing Bill Number 29-38COR, An Act to Add a New Article 6 of Chapter 48, Division 1, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Prohibitions on Discrimination in Housing Based on Source of Income as to Promote Equitable Access to Housing. And this was introduced by Senator Sabina Perez and, uh, I co-sponsored this piece of legislation. I will give the author the opportunity to have her opening statement. Uh, Senator Perez, you're recognized, ma'am.
Uh, thank you, Vice Speaker and Chair, uh, for this opportunity to hear Bill 29-38. So Bill 29-38 aims to adopt prohibitions against housing discrimination on the basis of source of income in accordance with county, state, federal efforts to ensure equitable access to housing. So federal housing vouchers help around 2.3 million households and, and veterans live in adequate and stable housing. However, it's currently legal for landlords to reject these vouchers in states where there are no source of income protections. In the 2018 pilot study by Cunningham et al., uh, they found that denials were as high as 80% in major cities for renters with housing vouchers. In the U.S. housing voucher recipients, um, approximately 80% of households were headed by women and 49% had a member of disability. Discrimination faced by those with housing vouchers makes the housing search process more complicated and time-consuming for these recipients, often restricting their options and resulting in suboptimal housing choices. According to the 2020 Guam Housing Study and Needs Assessment Prepared for Guam, Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, 74.7% of needed housing units are for households below the income eligibility threshold for HUD. Section 8 vouchers comprise a critical component of housing assistance, as demonstrated by Gura's report, a total of 22,718 authorized vouchers at a lease rate of 97%. And this overwhelming need and utilization rate is challenged by Guam's increasingly unaffordable housing market. Source of income means any lawful and verifiable source of money paid directly or indirectly or on behalf of a person that includes income derived from any lawful profession or occupation and income or rental payments derived from any government or private assistance, grant, or loan program. Bill 2938 specifically aims to prohibit the following: Restricting or denying access, membership, participation, and services related to the business of selling or renting dwelling units on the count of a person's source of income, including vouchers like Section 8 HUD Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Vouchers, or HUD VASH, Social Security benefits, payment from a trust or guardian, or other lawful sources of income, refusing to rent or lease or show a house for rent or lease or otherwise make it unavailable for rent or lease because of a person's source of income. It would also, Bill 29-38 aims to prevent discrimination based on the terms and conditions or privileges pertaining to renting or leasing a housing because of the source of income. It would also prohibit, uh, printing or publishing any notice or advertisement for rent or lease that indicates limitations or discrimination based on the source of income. And also it prohibits to make a representation that housing is not available when in fact it is, uh, for the purpose of discriminating a person on the house, uh, source of income. And finally, it would prohibit, um, inducing or attempting to rent any housing regarding the entry or prospective entry into a neighborhood of a person with particular sources of income. The bill proposes for violations of source of income discrimination, a fine up to $2,000 for the first offense and $2,500 for subsequent offenses as determined by a court. Uh, currently, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity receives such complaints. Um, there's also an access with the federal civil rights laws that could also investigate that, these. Overall, Bill 2938 aims to protect families with disabilities and veterans, et cetera, from housing discrimination due to source of income. I'd like to thank my co-sponsor, Vice Speaker Ada, and I appreciate the testimony provided by, uh, and those in the community. Uh, we did receive something from West Care in support of the bill. And, um, I believe, um, Guam Housing Corporation and, uh, Guam Housing Urban Renewal Authority is also looking to submit testimony on this. Uh, just to note, uh, many of these federal programs, including the CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grants, uh, including the Disaster Relief Fund, and many federal programs require that, um, there is no discrimination or prohibits discrimination based on source of income. Um, so thank you, um, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity to provide opening remarks. And, um, I know, uh, yeah, I look forward to any testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. And we did, uh, invite Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority to the public hearing this morning, as well as Guam Housing Corporation and the Office of the Attorney General. Uh, perhaps what we may do in the committee is to, uh, schedule an additional public hearing, Senator, so that we'd be able to get all three of those offices down here to testify. Is, uh, I believe that the Office of the Attorney General being the law enforcement arm of the, uh, of our government, um, may have a, uh, a valuable input into this piece of legislation. And, uh, with that moving forward, uh, without any objection from the author of the legislation, that perhaps we'll go ahead and schedule for an additional public hearing, ma'am? Okay? With that being said, um, Bill 29-38COR has been publicly heard, but we will schedule for an additional public hearing for this, uh, piece of legislation. Uh, thank you, Senator, for your understanding on cooperation. Now we'll go ahead and hear Bill Number 132-38COR, An Act to Amend Subsection 450200A, Subsection 45201, Subsection 45202, and Subsection 45203, all of Article 2, Chapter 45, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the updating the Guam Environmental Trust Fund that enhances the response to environmental emergencies and increase, increases the capacity of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency to safeguard the health of our environment and our people. Again, I would like to ask, uh, the author of the piece of legislation, Senator Sabina Perez, for her opening statement. Uh, ma'am, you're recognized again.
Uh, thank you, Chair and, uh, Vice Speaker. So Bill 13238 aims to clarify authorized expenditures of the Environmental Trust Fund in order for Guam EPA to effectively meet its vast array of regulatory mandates for environmental protections and to facilitate emergency response by eliminating the cap of 5,000 and creating an emergency response reserve with board oversight. Uh, specifically, Bill 132-38 clarifies that the fund can be used for the following: To clean up illegal dump sites in addition to cleaning up hazardous materials and restoring and repairing damage done to Guam's environment. Uh, to implement solid waste activities, um, to curb illegal dumping in addition to existing use of implementing the Order Consent Decree Supplemental Environmental Project, or SEP, which is currently covered, um, by a trust created by the partial settlement of $33 million from the, um, Civil Case United States versus the government of Guam. Uh, Civil Case 02-00022. Uh, it would also allow to conduct activities related to the improvement, compliance, and enforcement of many of the different, uh, regulations, such as the Safe Drinking Water Act, uh, water quality, uh, those that pertain to water quality, air quality, hazardous waste management, recycling, environmental monitoring, planning, technical assistance and training in accordance with Guam laws and federal laws and regulations. It would also allow, uh, the creation of emergency response reserve. So for decades, Guam EPA has relied primarily on federal funding for its operations, including salaries for its employees. And with the current passage of the federal budget, Guam EPA is at risk of losing this once reliable funding source and must turn to local sources to offset federal cuts, which will have a devastating effect. Bill 132-38 is timely and needed for continued operations of Guam EPA and to minimize disruptions from federal cuts. Uh, I thank my co-sponsor, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, for support and look forward to testimony and support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez, uh, once again also for allowing me to be a co-sponsor in this piece of legislation. Uh, we have here today to testify on, um, Bill Number 132-38COR. I'm Michelle Lastimoso, the, uh, Guam EPA Administrator. Ma'am, if you can please come up to the, uh... Thank you, ma'am, for being here today and, uh, you can go ahead and proceed with your testimony and for Bill Number 132-38COR. And I understand that you are in support of this legislation. Thank you.
That's correct. Good morning and half a day, Vice Speaker and honorable members of the committee, Senator Perez, Senator Barnett, Senator Taidegui, Senator Gumatauto, and Senator Terlai. Uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to, um, provide support for this bill. The Guam Environmental Protection Agency, Guam EPA, offers its full support for Bill Number 132-38 and provides the following testimony in support of its enactment. The proposed amendments to Chapter 45, Title 10, GCA, modernize and expand the statutory authority of Guam EPA, the Guam Environmental Trust Fund, to meet the island's growing environmental challenges. Guam's environmental response efforts, ranging from hazardous waste cleanup to emergency response and climate adaptation, require greater flexibility, rapid mobilization of resources, and scalable funding mechanisms. We support the bill's removal of the outdated $5,000 emergency expenditure cap and the requirement of an emergency declaration. We support the Reserve Fund for unforeseen public and environmental health threats. Expanding the Environmental Trust Fund to include air and water quality monitoring, recycling, and enforcement initiatives marks a significant advancement in environmental stewardship. The Guam EPA recognizes several, several compelling reasons why this legislation is both necessary and timely. One, emergency response capacity. Expanding eligible uses and enhancing spending flexibility allows Guam EPA to quickly address spills, extreme weather events, and other urgent threats without being hindered by restrictive administrative processes. Two, sustainable management tools enhance, enable ETF resources to support compliance, monitoring, and technical assistance, empowering the Guam EPA to meet the needs of diverse stakeholders, including permitting entities and underserved communities while ensuring environmental justice. Bill 132 aligns Guam's laws with evolving mandates from the Safe Drinking Water Act, Clean Water Act, and the Resource Recovery, Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, reflecting modern environmental governance practices. Four, fiscal accountability and transparency. The bill requires annual reporting of fund revenue, expenditures, and balances, enhancing trust among the public and legislative oversight bodies. Five, institutional resilience. The bill allows ETF funds to be used for staff salaries and essential resources in emergency response situations, enhancing the Guam EPA's ability to retain expertise as experienced personnel near retirement. Guam EPA also recommends that funds be a continuing appropriation with use of lapsed funds. Additionally, we recommend identifying a reliable and consistent funding source for this bill should it become law. In conclusion, Bill 132-38 reinforces Guam's environmental resilience and reflects a proactive investment in the health of our island and our people. We thank you for this leadership in bringing this important legislation forward. Sijus Massey.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony this morning on one, on Bill 132-38COR. I'll go ahead and open up the panel to my colleagues for any questions or comments that they may have. I'll start off with Senator Barnett. Sir, you're recognized this morning, sir.
Sijus Massey, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to, uh, speak on the bill. And thank you, uh, Administrator Lastimoso, for your, uh, testimony. Uh, not really, uh, many questions on it, but I did want to commend the author as she continues to just kind of go down the line and introduce bills that, that really address, uh, the, uh, needs and, uh, attempt to resolve some of the challenges, uh, that the Guam Environmental Protection Agency faces relative to the, uh, use of these funds and, uh, limitation on the emergency, um, declaration spending. Can you kind of share how that's been a limiting, uh, factor for you guys in previous emergencies? Having to do things $5,000 at a time?
Um, so we haven't had to use this fund very often, only because that $5,000 is a limiting factor. Um, you know, there's probably no, um, emergency response that we've encountered that would probably cost less than $5,000. So we haven't, um, really had to tap into that fund because of that limitation and because there is the requirement for, uh, an emergency declaration to use the fund.
Right, I think the bill does, uh, a lot of things, but that's probably the, um, most important thing that it does. You know, I, I just saw here that, uh, in, in your testimony, you mentioned that, uh, the bill also allows the fund, uh, to be used for provisions for, uh, staff pay. Like, in the event that happens, because I'm just, you know, the, um, cynic in me is worried that instead of, uh, funding going to, uh, you know, address environmental concerns, we're going to end up hiring a bunch of, uh, people. But I'm hoping you can say that's not going to be the case.
Well, uh, considering that the federal budget does eliminate, eliminate our categorical, uh, grants that provides funding for salaries for our staff, um, certainly the inclusion for salaries is, um, I think, warranted in the face.
These are critical positions, right?
Right, of course, absolutely.
Give me an idea of like what types of positions you would, uh, use the fund to hire?
Uh, certainly, um, our chief engineer, our lab manager, all of our environmental health specialists that, um, conduct inspections, our inspectors, our biologists, our chemists, all of our staff is considered essential in my, in my opinion.
So the, the, these, uh, the filling of these positions, it's going to address, uh, some of the, uh, federal, um, shortages and cuts that are coming down from DC?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So that's another great thing that the bill does then. So thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak. And, uh, Sijus Massey, Administrator, uh, Lastimoso, and good morning also to Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Uh, Senator Taidegui, you're recognized, ma'am.
Sijus Massey, um... I, uh, well, first, thank you so much for being here, EPA, and, uh, commend the author of, the authors of the legislation to con- of the legislation to continue to provide more of a quick response to emergencies that are desperately needed, finding out that the more you delay on something, the more it costs. So you know, to nip it firsthand is better, I was ready to say something, nip it in the... Okay, you know what I was going to say there, but anyways. Does the board need approval, will need any approval for this funding?
I don't believe so. Our board is a policy board, so certainly if it requires any policy changes or their approval, then they would get involved, but in terms of budgeting and operations for the agency, that would fall on myself and the deputy.
Okay. Mr. Chair, is there a fiscal note on this? I didn't... Was it provided? Let me see, I'm so sorry. I'll let someone look at that later.
They'll bring it up for you.
Okay, was provided?
It was administrative in nature.
Okay, administrative in nature. Okay, thank you so much, just verifying that. Will the creation, so will the creation of a reserve fund reduce available funding for routine EPA functions and how much of the current GETF balance is intended for the reserves?
In terms of the emergency response reserve, I think we would have to look at, you know, market research to look at contracts for environmental companies that we would, I guess, seek to provide those emergency response or emergency cleanup activities. So I think we would, we would first have to look at the market research to see how much we would consider putting into that reserve.
Okay. And will this expand, this expanded authority align with the federal EPA requirements and funding programs?
I believe so, so you know, all of our programs are statutory in nature to align with federal requirements in terms of whatever emergency response we have to address will always, will always be in line with local and federal regulation.
Okay, and how would you comply with, you know, any concerns with transparency as far as auditing this particular fund?
Certainly our books are always open for review. Certainly we have an administrative staff that is excellent in tracking our expenditures and our balances, so at any time an audit is warranted or wanted, certainly our books are always open for review.
That's good to know. Is any of this on your website as far as, you know, expenditures that the EPA, you know, like travel or anything like that? Is that all on the website?
I don't believe it is at this time, but certainly we do provide an expenditure report to our board monthly.
And it is in the board minutes, right? In the meeting?
It's part of their package every month.
So it is on the website?
I don't believe it's currently on the website.
Your board minutes?
Oh yes, yes, the board minutes are...
So if it's in the board minutes and it's on the website, it's there?
Yes.
Okay, okay, well, thank you so much and I appreciate all the work that you do at EPA. I know you're very short-staffed, people are retiring or going to other, especially there are individuals at EPA with all the wealth of knowledge and the training that you have are being picked up left and right by, you know, the fed side because of that, so I hope we can work on some kind of program to keep them at EPA, so.
We hope that we provide a happy and productive and efficient workplace that they want to stay.
Okay, we're going to need more than that because they're really being pulled. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Senator Taigui. Senator Trelahi, you're recognized ma'am.
Sidus Masi, Mr. Chair, and I thank the sponsor for this bill and thank you for your testimony Director Lastimosa. Could you just tell us more about these federal cuts that you're anticipating?
So currently we receive about $3.8, $3.9 million in our categorical grants. That goes into a consolidated grant to fund about 85% of our agency. So in the fiscal year 2026 federal budget, it eliminates those categorical grants to Guam EPA.
What's the amount, like the total 3.89?
Right.
Wow. And so what is that impact on your agency? What divisions does it remove or are there entire divisions or what is the impact to your agents?
Considering that we receive about $800,000 in local grants, I'm sorry, in local funds, that would impact almost all the agency. We could not function without that, those federal grants to support not only salaries but operations.
Is, so you're saying the 3.89 is all you receive? There's no other funding that EPA is getting?
Not from, not from, I mean, that's our federal consolidated grant money?
Yeah.
And then we get about $800,000 from the general fund.
Yeah, so no other federal grants are coming through, you're saying? So this is for sure now?
Yes.
You are going to lose 3.89 million, your entire federal funding for Guam EPA?
Correct, so we do receive about $68,500 from DOT through our FMSA grant, but about eight point, I'm sorry, 3.8, 3.9 million specifically from USCPA.
Okay, that's huge and honestly, that's the first time I'm hearing that. I'm not sure if that was announced earlier in the news. Have you heard of any other plan of how to deal with that?
Certainly through this Environmental Trust Fund and hopefully a reliable funding It could fund the rest of our agency if we find a funding source.
So based on prior years, how much is deposited into that trust fund every year? The fiscal note doesn't say anything about amounts, it just says it's administrative. Maybe the sponsor?
Yeah, so I looked at last year's budget, it was about $400,000.
But if it's only $400,000 a year, it's not going to support your 3.89 million?
Not at all. I mean, it would, it would literally eliminate our agency's operations and functions altogether.
All right, so you're counting on the balance to take us through at least 2026, maybe some other years, and there's a balance, Senator?
So we do have monies in our accounts from what supposedly a five-year grant through emerging contaminants, small disadvantaged communities grant. So that was a $45 million federal grant over five years. We have received three of those five years, so we have about $26 million left from that ECD, SDC grant in our account. We have talked to our federal grantors about maybe redirecting those monies if it becomes necessary, but we haven't crossed that bridge yet.
Okay.
That money is supposed to help build our new laboratory, but more importantly, provide laboratory services to analyze contaminants, emerging contaminants in our drinking water.
The law says, 42504 of this same law says that the AG is supposed to recover damages for environmental violations. Has there any money been recovered in the last five years that you know of?
For environmental damages? I know with the marble case, there was $125,000 that was, that was levied against the company to Guam EPA. Also, we have SEP projects where a company was fined, but in lieu of a fine, they provided training for sediment control.
All right, so is the balance of the trust fund the amount that was deposited from the audit dump reserve fund, the 33 million plus?
No.
No?
No, that was legislatively appropriated.
Okay, so that 33 million is not in this fund at all, Senator?
No.
Okay, sorry, it's in the, I'm just making sure, so, so is that money available to you only for the closure?
We don't have, I know that we are being given the responsibility to oversee that fund. We currently do not oversee it at this moment, so we don't have access to that funding yet.
In your letter, you asked that, at the end, you said you recommended the legislature consider removing the 25% ceiling in 45201 for programs related to prevention and education?
Yeah, so prior to, prior to us coming here, we were informed that it had already been edited to remove that 25%.
Yeah, so in Section 3, it removes the 25% cap, says you can use all the funds for prevention and, but I really don't want to see like outreach programs, this funding use when you have critical needs for enforcement, so I'm hoping that, do you have a plan of how you would spend the money?
I guess it would depend on how much money we get. There hasn't been a funding source identified.
Well, they, they're identifying this trust fund?
Right, the $400,000.
What's the balance?
About $400,000 currently.
All right, that's not much.
No.
Uh-oh, okay. And then on 45202, it says that you're going to utilize the reserves, so this is different. This is for emergency response?
That's correct.
But, but you're supposed to set aside a reserve for emergency, the bill would allow you to use the funds in the trust fund and set aside a certain amount for emergencies, and then this provision says you can utilize the reserve funds for emergencies, but at the end it says you're going to get board approval if it's greater than what is held in the reserve fund, meaning you're going to tap into the regular trust fund. So, okay, how much do you think, if it's $400,000 which you set aside for emergencies, what is an emergency response amount that's suitable?
Well, I want to say maybe 25%, 30%. That might not even be enough, but I think that's a conservative amount to put into a reserve fund for emergency response.
All right, so the $400,000 that's deposited in previous years, you have used that? That has been appropriated to you or is it?
Right, so the limiting factor in the use of that fund is the $5,000 cap, but also it requires an emergency declaration by the governor. So we haven't had to use that fund because it requires those, it requires the emergency declaration by the governor.
How will a plan be made by EPA as to what the priorities are going to be going forward if the federal grants are in place, I mean, cuts now? You're saying those are solid, those are done. What, how is this plan going to be made? Who's working on that plan to go forward, like to make a recommendation to the governor, for example? These divisions are all going to be wiped out? This is what we're going to use the $400,000 for and that's all we've got left?
Right, so like I mentioned earlier, so we do have monies in our accounts that will last us on maybe a good three or four years moving forward in terms of salaries if we're able to redirect some of that ECD, SDC federal grant money to keep the agency afloat. However, that still needs to be discussed with our federal grantors, but certainly if that is not allowed and it, you know, if we can't pay salaries, certainly that $400,000, we have an annual budget alone just for salaries, about $3 million. So $400,000 would only take us maybe a couple months in terms of salaries. So we definitely have to prioritize how that money, our federal grants, can be used and spent, but if we were to rely solely on the $400,000, it would be to keep operations afloat.
Will you be making a request to amend your budget request to BBMR in light of this information?
Absolutely.
All right, I think that has to be done, yeah. All right, well, this is really very sad news, but I'm grateful for the bill that it gives you one opportunity at least for, for some money for our enforcement. Sidus Masi, thank you Director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Senator, appreciate you. Senator Gumatautan, you're recognized, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Michelle. Just have a couple of questions. With the FY 2025 budget law authorizing Guam EPA to expend up to the level of revenues collected for the Guam Environmental Trust Fund for fiscal year 2025, for the record, how much did the fund generate in excess of the adopted revenue level during FY '23 and FY '24, recognizing that the OPA reported earlier this year that the fund had $894,025 in total assets at the end of FY 2023?
I'm sorry, Senator, I don't have access to that report. All I know is every year, that's what our balance is, is about $400,000 every year. That's part of the budget, the budget law. I haven't seen numbers that exceed $800,000 in that account.
Yeah, I would say, Michelle, to help us make a decision, to have that answer to the committee, I think would be critical. If I could ask that, if you can provide it back to the Chair.
Absolutely.
And then what discussions, if any, have taken place with respect to the limits of the Guam Environmental Trust Fund in responding to environmental emergencies, recognizing that with respect to the fund's proposed FY 2026 budget of $411,424, $156,898 is set aside for one employee's salary and benefits, $175,000 for contractual services, including $170,000 in legal services, and $5,000 for advertisements, leaving just $79,000 available as Bill 132 proposes to support emergency procurements in response to an emergency declaration?
Could you repeat the question, Senator?
Sure. What discussions, if any, have taken place with respect to the limits of the Guam Environmental Trust Fund in responding to environmental emergencies, recognizing that with respect to the fund's proposed FY '26 budget of $411,000, $156,000 is set aside for one employee's salary and benefits, $175,000 for contractual services, including $170,000 for legal services and $5,000 for advertisements, leaving just $79,000 available as Bill 132 proposes to support emergency procurements in response to emergency declarations?
I would say that if that's the remaining balance, you know, minus all the other expected expenditures, then all of that would definitely go to emergency response efforts. Certainly $79,000 is not a lot of money if it were a response to a catastrophic event, but certainly we will, if that was what's remaining, then that's what we would put towards emergency response. You know, maybe looking at other expenditures, if we needed to cut and put more money towards emergency response efforts or into that fund, then that's what we'll do.
Right, Michelle, and I mean, I'm sure the board has to take into consideration the priorities. I mean, if you're looking about the minimum mandate to support your operations, this is a big deal, which gets me to, it's just more of a, I don't know if it's commentary or question, but you mentioned that you have not had a conversation yet with the federal grantor agencies relative to this $3.8 million that you guys are probably going to come up short? Is that the case?
We've had preliminary discussions about redirecting, so this was discussions that were had prior to the Senate passing the, passing the bill, the federal bill. So we haven't had a formal discussion about how that's going to affect us come FY '26 and whether or not, you know, we have approval or authorization to redirect any of that money towards salaries, you know, aside from its intended purposes, our intended purpose to build our laboratory and to provide those analytical services for emerging contaminants in our drinking water.
That is a lot of mandates that need... That, that is a lot of mandates that needs their support or their visibility on it, like yesterday. I'm hoping that following the hearing, you will engage immediately, let the committee chair know that you've already have a formal meeting. I would, I would strongly suggest even getting him involved, only because as this bill is going through our process, this is going to be more than just this particular bill. That's going to need support from this legislature. So, Michelle, I, I would strongly recommend that if I could, if I had any smidgen of influence on that.
Yes. We have had discussions as early as about two weeks ago. So our, our agency has met with not only our Guam program manager, but the Pacific Islands' program manager, as well as the, the deputy administrator for Region 9.
I mean, but, I mean, for the public's own thing, are, are they still in business? Because I heard all Region 9 is pretty much gone.
Yes. I know that there were some cuts to the regional office, but those.
Some cuts? There was actually a lot of cuts.
Well, in our, in our regional office, I know of 16 people that were released. And again, those positions are, that I mentioned that we've had discussions with, they are still there. They are still there today. So certainly, we've had engagement with, you know, their uppermost management to discuss the impacts to Guam, not only to Guam, but the entire nation.
No, absolutely. And again, I'm, I strongly, if I can say strongly encourage you to get your committee chair maybe involved in the next meeting so that we have some visibility. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gumitato. Thank you, Administrator Lastimosa, for the testimony on Bill Number 138 dash 38. And, you know, we look forward to getting the information, 132 dash 38, as we look forward to getting the information that the Senator Gumitato has requested. If there'll be no further comments or questions, this will conclude today's, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, Senator Perez. I wanted to give the Senator her, her, her closing remarks for Bill 132 dash 38 COR. Ma'am, you're recognized. My apologies again.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Vice Speaker. So, yeah, I, I agree that if we can make this fund a continuing appropriations and including that you have access to the lapse funds as, is important. One of the iterations of this bill, just to let you know, is I was thinking of creating it similar to the other special funds that Guam EPA has access to, and basically it was, you have full control over that and it's not legislative appropriated. What is your view? Because, you know, there could be another iteration where, you know, that could occur or legislative, it would still be through legislative appropriation, because that's what this bill currently, currently has. It still requires legislative appropriations. And what is your view on that?
I think my concern with legislative approval is, one, whether or not it would limit the total amount that is available to us, and, two, whether or not it would delay any use of the funds.
Then in that case, what would have to happen is maybe an understanding of the percentages. You know, in the bill, it currently authorizes or clarifies the use to include cleanup of, you know, illegal dump sites, repair Guam's environment, that's one. The second one is to implement solid waste, because that's all locally funded from what I understand, right? We don't get any federal funding for that.
That's correct.
So that's another item that has been included in this bill to help with solid waste, what is it, enforcement. And then the third thing in this bill is the language that was provided by EPA, which is conduct activities relative to improvement, compliance, and enforcement of its different mandates. And then the fourth one was an emergency response reserve. So if we're going to go in the direction of continuing appropriation, special fund, what percentages would you recommend for each of those categories? And that's something that maybe you don't have the answer right now, but if we're going to amend this bill, if you can provide that information.
Well, truth be told, if, if we're talking about illegal dump sites and cleanup of illegal dump sites and the numerous amounts of illegal dump sites that we've identified, it could take up all of that money. It could be 100% if we wanted to focus specifically on illegal dump sites, but certainly, I think that management would need to talk about how best to use that money and where we would divide the percentages. But if, if, if truly, I certainly, Glenn could speak to the volume of illegal dump sites, the volume of waste at these illegal dump sites. If we were to prioritize just that, it could really use up that $400,000 just for cleanup. Because, you know, we all know that it's not just clean trash. There may be hazardous waste in there, aside from, you know, white goods and, you know, other debris, tires, cars at these illegal dump sites. So certainly, we'd have to, we'd have to talk amongst the management and maybe even with our board, how we would best use and divide that money up into these categories.
Okay. So that's something, the language in the other funds that you have, it says that, that the board would have to, the administrator would have to present the budget to the board prior to expenditure.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And that's pretty concerning. I know I've been looking for local funds for you guys to.
Thank you.
Assist with the, you know, capacity, enforcement capacity, which is really needed in order, especially compliance, too. We want to go with compliance first, you know, we want to prevent any kind of damage that happens.
That's the ideal situation.
Yes. And so I guess, yeah, this fund, you know, we want to make sure that it's flexible, increase the flexibility. And especially with, you know, I know, I believe I was told during Fred Castro's day that a lot of local funding was reverted to federal funding for these positions, and at that time, it was seen as a good move, right? But now that, you know, the pendulum has swung the other way, now we have to look for local funding again. And, and so do you think the language in this bill is sufficient to support salaries for the, I guess, the staff at EPA?
Yeah. So I think maybe the one thing that is missing in terms of salaries is, is that inclusive of salaries and benefits? So do we need to add the word salaries and benefits?
Probably not necessary, but we can, yeah, definitely staffing costs, operational costs. Yeah. So if this, if ever that this fund is performing better than that, we could utilize the funds to help offset any losses.
Yes, absolutely. I think it covers all of our operations, and the flexibility of the use of this fund covers everything that we could possibly do within our operations.
So I remember in, I think it was the '36 Guam Legislature, you guys are in the process of building your headquarters. And so has any of the funding loss affected that? And would you have to pull from other sources?
So we have received three years of that five-year grant with the expectation that we will receive year four of that money before October 1st. So we will have about 30, a little over $30 million from that grant. Certainly, we don't know what the building costs are going to be until we go out for bid. Initially, when we started, this project was supposed to be between $8 to $12 million. But with the current construction costs, we're looking at about almost spending that entire budget or close to, to construct the building and buy the necessary equipment to, to perform the analytical services intended for that, for that grant. So we don't know. We may have to cut bells and whistles from the design. So we're currently engaged with a contractor, the architectural contractor, to see where we may have to make cuts. But again, the expectation is we're going to get that year four money, but until I see that in our coffers, then we may have to renegotiate the design of the building.
I believe that's all my questions, so thank you for being here today and providing testimony. So I feel that Bill 132 dash 38 is a timely measure because it aims to expand and clarify the uses of the Environmental Trust Fund to include operational costs at a time when federal cuts to EPA are expected, particularly because Guam EPA is primarily federally funded. The uses would include cleaning up illegal dump sites and restoring, repairing damage done to Guam's environment, implementing solid waste activities to curb illegal dumping, to conduct activities related to the improvement, compliance, and enforcement of the many regulatory mandates that Guam EPA has, as well as creating an emergency reserve fund. Bill 132 dash 38 modernizes the emergency response by removing the $5,000 cap and creating an emergency response reserve with board oversight. I want to thank Guam EPA for providing the testimony, my co-sponsor, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, and I look forward to the support of my colleagues. Sizos-Mossi.
Thank you, Senator Perez. There'll be no further comments or questions, so go ahead. The confirmation hearing of Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez, Bill Number 29 dash 38 COR, and Bill Number 132 dash 38 COR to be publicly heard. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearings and maybe, which may be mailed to my office on the second floor of the Guam Congress Building at 163 Chalan Santo Papa in Agatia. You may also send your statements to us at Vice Speaker Tony Ada at guamlegislature.gov. I'd like to thank you all for your participation here today, and this public hearing is adjourned at 10:12 a.m. Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for being here as well. Thank you, Administrator Lastimosa.
Thank you, too.